All the city, Marine City Special Meeting to order. 200 South Parker, Marine City, Michigan, Thursday, October 15th, 2020, 7:00 PM.
October 8th.
October 8th. Got the wrong sheet. Wonder where I'm looking. Can we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And let's stand for.
Plight allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Ryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Pellihan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner McCammon.
Here.
City Manager Lovett.
Here.
All right, need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to public comment, anyone is welcome to address the city commission, please state your name, please limit your comments to five minutes, this is your time to raise issues, the commission will not respond, but issues will be followed upon as necessary. No one here, okay. Moving on to new business guaranteed maximum price for 200 South Parker.
Good evening, everyone, a pleasure to be back again with you tonight, David Gasson with Partners in Architecture, and Brian Hines is here with me as well. So we were with you early September on the 3rd, and reviewed what we had at that time, and were directed to or wished to kind of think a little bit more about it, and worked with the committee on a meeting on the 8th of September. And we went through quite a bit of information with, you know, strategic thinking about how do we come back to the revision, reduce price, I'll just go through really briefly what we covered, we looked at the site issues, and was determined through the conversation that perhaps the city could do that at a lesser cost than what we had, and we pulled that away from the project at that time, and similarly for the exterior of the building, primarily the windows and the siding and the options that we had for that. We also went through interior renovations that we had been talking about and kind of refining along the way, and looked at more, minor as they were, they were cost-saving ideas and had no impact on function, so I'll just name a few of them here, door types we changed, doors were a couple different things, doors that are solid doors, doors with window lights in them, and we took out windows where we could without reducing the functionality of having a vision through the door, there were only a few of them. And then some of the doors had side lights, not just a window in the door, but a window adjacent to the door, and those weren't necessary in two locations, so we removed those, and then some of the doors were okay, or acceptable as hollow doors versus solid core doors, so that was also a reduction that we made that saved some money. There were also a couple interior windows from one room to another, at one time were thought to be necessary for vision, but we were able to do that with sightlines through doorways or open doorways, so that was another possible elimination that we did take. And then we simplified the reception counter, which kind of evolved through a couple different durations of plan where it was an open counter, and then we had a transaction window with deal trays and some window openings in it, we were able to simplify that a little bit further for cost savings. So there were some of the minor things, the bigger things, which we talked about, most of those in some way or another here, it's September 3rd, the bigger items were mechanical and electrical, which we seem to focus on. And Bill brought up a strategy or an approach for natural ventilation and percentage of open air from outside to inside that we looked at further, and that was a suggestion that we followed through with, and the plans previously called for electric duct heaters with outside air coming into the building being heated because it needed to be conditioned, bringing the natural ventilations to the three existing units that are currently there. So that we took out of the project and looked at the natural ventilation process by adding windows, which was a pretty significant savings. The other element of mechanical that kind of led into that, also again from Bill's suggestion, was looking at that new unit in the multipurpose area, so we had three original existing units, and we added a fourth for two things, natural ventilation, and that's really where it came up, was do we really need that unit? And the other component to that which was more critical was the heating and cooling that it adds to the capacity of those three systems that are there, really supplements for the new use, which is that assembly space for multipurpose. But we looked at that as a code provision of grandfathering, so it's an existing building functioning with three units, so the opt there was to take out the new fourth unit and go with the grandfathering use of the existing three. So those combined were pretty significant cost savings, and I think through a strategic use of the code, we were able to do that, and thank you, Bill, for that suggestion that we kind of evaluated through. The other thing that we brought up at that meeting on the 8th was duct, or not duct, but baseboard heating, and we looked at that again, and it's necessary in some areas, but not to the full extent that we had it. As an example, the conference room, which is really not a fully inhabited space, when you're there, you need heat, but you don't need two baseboard heats, so we eliminated those, and then where we had offices with two baseboards, we eliminated one. So the supplement of electric baseboard heat is needed, and we just sparingly left it in the building, so that was also a savings, which would be a deduct from the cost that is on the GMP right now, because that was done as a deduct elective, it wasn't necessarily just taken out of the bid. And when you look at the GMP, and we'll get to that in a minute, it's down at the bottom under alternates, it's called a deduct there. Electrically, in addition to the baseboard, we looked carefully at other elements within the design and the documents that we could potentially eliminate. A couple of things, we had in-floor outlets in the multipurpose room and in the conference room, which requires the saw cut the concrete, trench it out, run conduits and box in the floor, to get powers strategically located like in the conference room under the table, and then in the multipurpose room up at the dais and at the podium. So we looked at a way to daisy change that power, locate them such that cabling would not be a trip hazard if you didn't do the floor boxes, and that's what we elected to do. And then there were various other outlets throughout the building where there were three or four in one room, where we opted to do two instead of four, or something along those lines, we were able to eliminate six other outlets. So all in all, those were the next effort of how do we not change the functionality, but how do we look at saving money? So those are the things that we prepared and rebid, and at that meeting on the 8th, we talked about the delivery of design bill, which is what we've been doing all along, but I had mentioned at the last meeting, there are other ways to deliver a project that had potential savings or potential benefits to the city. We didn't elaborate a lot at this, the commission meeting, and we didn't really elaborate a lot of the committee meeting on the 8th, but we decided to move ahead at that point and rebid and come back to you tonight, or whatever the date were, I think we looked at the 8th or the 15th. So we went through the rebid process, and a couple things that are in the packet, I assume you got the documents that we sent, three different documents, one is the GMP, the other two are significant, because I did say or express at the last meeting that we didn't get a lot of coverage, there wasn't a lot of bid participation in each trade. So we got information from the commission or through Elaine, and I'm not exactly sure exactly where it came from, but it was very helpful for us, and we as a group contacted 100 or almost 120, maybe it was slightly over that, additional contractors, that's a huge number, to make them aware of the project and try to garner their interest and get them to submit a bid, and that's one of the packets that you got tonight, so that's just a listing of those contractors, a great deal of them are from you. And it just kind of shows how we contacted them, by phone, by email, the follow-up and so forth, so there was a good effort, and it proved to bear fruit. The next package is a listing of subcontractors that actually submitted a bid per trade, and if we have 17 trade groups, I think it was, only two out of those 17 had only two bidders, which wasn't the case last time, there were a lot of one bid, two bids, so there's only two out of the 17 that were of two bidders, most were three, four, five, and six, some even more than that. So participation was high, which we were grateful for. The next document that we prepared is the kind of summary of the GMP and the bidding process, the things I've added here from last time, and I try to keep in the same format so it would be easy for you to look from one to the other, but it's obvious to notice that the site is not there because that was excluded, and the exterior improvements aren't there. However, some of the exterior improvements weren't totally eliminated, so I retitled that top green bar renovations improvement, because some of the elements that were in exterior improvements are still in the job, such as aluminum doors and frames, that's part of what was the exterior number previously, as well as ceilings. So that's still in these numbers.
And also the openings for the other new windows.
Yes, yeah, very good.
The opening itself, not the window for the constructing that opening.
Excellent point. So as a, just as a glance at them, when I look at them, there are still some, two that didn't change, and there are one, two, three, four, six that reduced in that first portion, some went up, which was a little bit of a surprise, but there's an explanation, and I'll go through those particularly, just so if you have a question in your mind, I'm hopefully answering it. The very first one, demolition and removals is a bigger number than it was before. However, for that natural ventilation approach, we had to add 4% of outside air through new windows in the multipurpose room, so there's demolition to achieve those new openings. Likewise, the rough carpentry number went up, and that's attributed to the same thing. So when they make that opening, they have to now prep it as a rough opening to receive a new window, so that was another, those two of the first three actually went up. The next that went up was metal studs, insulation, drywall work, it went up in my mind significantly without a lot of explanation, other than labor and materials are pretty erratic right now. So we're.
I think lumber, I guess lumber prices are skyrocketing right now for some reason.
In the range of 100%.
The fires, it could be because of COVID, everybody was shut down, but we're seeing lumber is skyrocketing. Go to Home Depot and studies your cost, it's just, it's like double the cost now.
Yeah, it's near 100%, and it changes, it goes from week to week, so I'm calling that still value engineering, and what that means is that we're not set on a particular contractor for that trade, so we're going to vet them, and then negotiate to make sure there's not some double coverage, and we're also going to make sure there's not something missing, and then hopefully in the course of a buyout, prices would be in our favor and go down. They wouldn't go up, but if prices were able to go down, we'd take advantage of that. And I indicate that in two other places, still value engineering, and that's in hollow metal and doors, and in cabinetry and millwork. In the hollow metal and doors, the frame in the doors are pretty well set, the hardware is a big, it's a big number of that number, and it's a matter of us hearing from the subcontractor, hey, I could do it like this cheaper, and that's the process that's going on right now, is the interaction between the subtrade and the general saying, show me your voluntary saving possibilities, and those things, as if we realized them, they would not stay in that line, and they'd move down to the contingency number, so that number would get bigger, and the remaining money that's left at the end of the job becomes a shared value for both of us. So it's to your benefit, obviously, that we continue to value engineer until buyout's complete, and even into the construction phase, if there's something that works out to be aha kind of an idea when things are open and more revealed, that there's still the chance that that could happen. Still evaluating value engineering and cabinetry millwork, that is because it puzzled that we've, we see a bigger number now than we had before, and the reality is it should have gone down. I don't know why it went up, but that would be a reason for us to vet and seek voluntary alternates from the different trades that submitted, or different contractors submitted for that trade. The bigger changes that you'll see is in HVAC going down to the next green bar, mechanical electrical plumbing. Plumbing actually went up, and that was attributed to, and their response was material and labor went up. No real changes occurred in plumbing, but it went up a few thousand dollars. HVAC and electrical both went down pretty significantly, primarily due to the two units that we've altered, the electrical duct heaters for the three existing, and the elimination of the new fourth HVAC unit in the multipurpose room. And electrical has some componentry that attaches to both of those, those are eliminated, so electrical went down, and then also the saw cutting and the electrical in the floor and the outlets also went down, and the duct heaters, not duct heaters, baseboards, I said earlier, they're an additional deduct of $1,500, that would be an electrical deduct, but it's not in that number, so that would go down even a little bit more if you elected to take that. Going down to the next green bar, builders' cost, permit allowance, that went down because we took the testing cost out. The testing really wouldn't apply to anything we're doing, that would be a direct thing that you would incur possibly when you're doing the site, so you'd test soil compaction, good soil, bad soil, in the base layer, and then the asphalt that goes down, so that's really what that testing is for, so it's no longer applicable to this work, so that $10,000 was eliminated. And the contingency went down slightly dollar-wise, but it's still there as a need for the risk and the whatever occurs during the course of construction. General conditions, the next item down the blue bar, substantial subtotal costs, construction general conditions went down appropriately to the reduced scope, likewise, the builders' overhead and costs and fee went down as well. And we've reduced our fee as well, and that's in part to, you know, understanding the situation, and also with the site work being eliminated, although we've engineered it already, the work would necessarily be something that we would observe and administer, the engineering part is already there, though. So all in all, when we get down to the bottom line, it's gone down pretty significantly, I was wishing for more, but where we were before at 833, although some of that has been deferred to another pot of money that you would do yourself, hopefully the savings you would anticipate on that site and extra work is better pricing than what we had if you had your own resources. To cover a couple other things, I just want to reiterate our approach, which is the same as last meeting in September, but different than when we started, we hope that that contingency and the value engineering will prove to add to it, that we'll have a savings at the end, and we've proposed that the savings would be 70% yours and 30% ours, which we think is an incentive for both of us to make collaborative, good decisions, as we did on our meeting on September 8th, and throughout the course of construction. You know, my goal would be that you'll have money left over at the end of the job, and you'll get everything that you've hoped for, at least in the scope as we defined it. The alternates, as we did originally, the existing ducts there have what you call a duck board, which is different than most metal, sheet metal ducts that are either lined with insulation or wrapped with insulation. When this was built, it was built out of an insulation board, and it's suitable, and it's fine to stay as is, so we're anticipating that it will be fine, but if you wanted to add insulation, there's a cost, and we've got the upfront alternate cost for that, but it's functioning like it is, assuming that we keep it intact, I don't think you'll need to execute that. Plumbing, the restroom right off the lobby, at the last iteration of refinements, we left the room intact to be fully capable of being outfitted as a restroom with the infrastructure in place, but no fixtures, and that would be an allowance to add in the rest of that and outfit it completely as a bathroom, so there's no finishes, it's just a storage room essentially right now in the way it's bid out. And then the two things we eliminated mechanically, the new unit in the multipurpose room, the furnace number four, and the electric duct heaters on the three units, if we added that back in, there was an add alternate to do that. One thing I want to elaborate on that is both of those aren't integral to the overall construction sequencing or logic that's going to happen with this interior build-out. Each one of those could be done separately without really interfering with what you're doing. You can come in and add those electric duct heaters almost without anyone knowing, it's in that mezzanine level, there's a little bit of work you have to do on the roof, but you could do it later if you wanted to. Same with that furnace in the multipurpose room, you could always add that later, so it's kind of a convenient thing to take out and call an alternate, whether you do it now or you do it in six years, it's still something that could be added in without undoing a lot of things, which I think is a real plus. And the last item in the alternates was to delete the three baseboards that I mentioned, so there would be a further reduction of $1,500 if you elected to do that. A couple other things, I had some thoughts, obviously, you know, it's been heavy on our minds that the cost has not been, you know, as well received as we would hope, or it hasn't, and that likewise for us, too. So we're thinking of how else could we possibly save money, and I think we've run the project in terms of the scope of the build-out through the wringer. We've done, you have done, the group that's been involved, an extraordinary job of being open and willing to discuss ideas and brought forth your own ideas, too, so I think we've wrenched out everything we can, but if you were to look at other opportunities, and some of it requires working your part, like if we were to look at another delivery, design build is the perspective we've taken all along on this, which should be the cheapest and fastest way to deliver a project. I'm not sure that you've totally believed that, based on the reactions I've gotten. So with a CM delivery, which is a construction management, it's still the trades, it's still somebody supervising and managing the work, I just wanted to put it out on the table as another thing to think about. The insurance and bonds that the builder brings to this project, which is basically guaranteeing you the price that we're saying, and also guaranteeing the loss of subtrades if something happens during the course of construction and somebody wigs out and walks off the site, our bond helps step in and take care of that missing contractor as an example. But it comes at a cost, it's about 3.5% of the fee that is in the general condition, so if you were to take on the individual trade contracts, you could save that, because through Michigan law, for contracts less than $50,000, you don't need bonds and insurance, and for the most part, I think only four out of the 17 exceed $50,000, so you'd have 13 contracts potentially that don't have to have bonds and insurance, saving you 3%, which is, you know, a chunk of money, it's not going to change the project significantly, but it's money you could put towards something else. The other aspect of doing that is that there are select, or potentially select, pieces of equipment that I've worked with other cities before, they buy direct and supply to the project, and then they save the tax. That would be a strategy, it's a burden because you have to do it, but there's a certain number of things that you can buy that save your tax, which I think is a good thing. The other benefit to that process is the contingency that we have built into this, which is our risk mitigator for things that happen, becomes you hold and control that throughout the course of the project, so anything that you save is 100%, you don't have to share that, that just becomes one more way to deal with your, the issues that come up, but the reward is all yours for doing that part of the work. I'm not really recommending that, I just wanted to make sure that I'm presenting you with all the possibilities. I think the right way to do it is to move forward with the GMP, knowing that we've done everything we can to reduce this cost, knowing that we're saying anything we save from this is going to be a reward back to you. And in light of timing, it would save a couple of weeks, a month or so if we continue down this path versus changing gears, which I think is a negative, but I definitely just wanted to point that out to you. So if you looked at these things, you'd be able, you'd be eliminating under CM delivery, and if you're not really sure what that is, and maybe you're not, so I'll just take one second to explain that. Construction management is a person or entity that works in the middle of the owner and the construction trades that manages the flow of work, and that person would administer your contracts to the trades. So it's a entity, and sometimes I've had owners that say, I'll do it, they just do it theirself, but a lot of cities or townships or villages aren't equipped with that type of person on staff to do it. But again, there were just certain things, I just wanted to make sure I was pointing out to you that are possibilities, but our recommendation is that the GMP, design, build, delivery, where you're free of risk, is the right way to go. If, you know, the number works for you, again, hopefully you've seen what we've done and really tried to, on your behalf, bring to you the best value we can. I know we've kind of gone up and down on a couple things in terms of the plan, but I think we got to a point where it's, it is the most efficient, cost-effective plan that will work for you. And not just today, it's a vision of 20 years, that you're going to be here for a long time, and I don't think you want to take shortcuts.
Any questions? Any questions?
Do you think that the lumber is going to change to be like 22x4s and studs? What is steel studs compared to wood?
Steel right now is probably a little better, and I just did another job where it was designed in wood and they opted to do steel, and that isn't normal, normally wood's cheaper, but like Brian said, it's like 100% more doubled right now.
And that's because the Colvin took all the, shut down all the mills, so there's no, nothing coming out of the mills.
Yeah.
Till they get the mills going again, the price is going to change.
We've also had a pretty good hurricane season, too, and that usually drives the price of lumber up, too.
Yeah, it's true, 26 hurricanes this year.
Any other questions? Yes.
So, we started this process, what, over a year ago now? And I was very impressed when you guys first came in, working on the architectural design phase, doing all of the interviewing, assessing the space, measuring everything, looking at all of the different details, our jobs, what everything entails. I think we kind of fell off course after that, you know, you guys are architects, and I think you did a great job at that, but these numbers and everything that I've asked for, I've asked for so much more detail in these numbers and more detail about what it is that we're getting product-wise. We've had the subcommittee group and meeting, talking about the materials. You know, I find out that the doors were called for, our $750 doors. You know, I thought from the beginning, we've really, really tried to impress upon you that this is a budget-friendly project, and we're trying to do the best that we can with the limited resources that we have. And, you know, yeah, we're looking at colored designs and things like that, and great, the wood grain pattern looks great, but we had no idea that that was like a $750 door compared to a standard commercial office place door that you could get for maybe $450. Those are the kind of things that are really concerning to me about these numbers. And then I'm looking at the detail of the numbers compared to what we've had in the past, and I just don't know where we're getting to these numbers with all of that detail. And then looking at the contingency, you mentioned that that's 5%, I actually calculated it out to 7% to 8%. You know, the numbers came down because we took the exterior work out, but, you know, to the tune of like $150,000, but your contingency only came down $1,000. You know, that's obviously totally wrong calculation there. Windows, you know, we have exterior quotes for doing the exterior, so vinyl and windows, those improvements, the quote that we got was almost a third of what I calculated out the line items for what you have. And to me, that is just. And to me, that is just very disturbing and I just, I've asked for, you know, more detail about these numbers. I've not gotten it. You know, even yesterday, I emailed you, "Is this all the information that you have?" And you said, "This is all you have." You know, we don't have any information about what these individual contractors' numbers were. You know, we can't call up the contractors and do our own self-verification, you know, "Hey, are you bidding on these doors? Were they like 750? Are they good enough doors for us? Are they higher-end than what we need?" I just, I feel like we just really haven't hit the mark here with it after the architectural. I think the architectural design is great, but I think from this point on, I just don't see how we can go forward that we have quotes for our exterior work that we pulled out, 50,000 compared to almost 175 from what you had on your bid tab. And that's a huge difference.
I did the same calculations, did the same thing you did for the exterior, just to see, compare. So I had two figures, one depending on if we went with vinyl, one depending on if we went with the fiber cement siding. So it was between 156 or 173. And yeah, we got two bids for doing everything, 52 and 75.
Including all of the windows and new ones.
Including all the windows, doors, removing the old siding, new siding, even the one, the 52, that in case we have some OSB underneath, that doesn't seem like a big deal to me. But when you calculate it out, you got to sit there and go, "How the heck can we be $100,000 off?" You know? So then I look at this one, and yes, some of it did go down, I compared the two sheets, but I still don't see how the inside of that building can run us $606,000. I mean, I...
It is a lot. I acknowledge that, it's a lot. And it's, when I look across a couple of other communities that I'm getting bids on, it's really not out of line, it's a little less. But to your point, Elaine, I appreciate your candor there and, you know, telling us what you feel about the process. The thing I'll say, the detail part, we're working as a design-build team, we're the design builder, we have a builder that's part of our team, and the process that he takes is he receives bids and he hasn't revealed specific numbers because he's still vetting and negotiating those final contracts. Once he says, "Here's the number and here's the bidder," then he's lost his ability to continue to find value, that he loses a little bit. And partly, knowing that that's an issue, and that's why I brought the CM up again tonight, is that for you, if we went that route, you would receive, I'll call it the window bid, and you would see from XYZ Window Company, boom, 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 you would hold that contract, you would agree or not agree, and look at the next guy. Knowing that you want a lot of information and I can't provide it to you because I don't have it, I wish I could, but if that's an important criteria, we should probably look at another delivery method that satisfies that urge for you to have that detail. So if you're, if you're taking the contracts, you're receiving them, I help you vet them, but you decide who you want to work with based on the information you get. That's a really good way to go if that's an important criteria to you. Like I said earlier, you save the 3.5% for bond and insurance, which is a good amount of money. And then you also potentially save on the contingency because it becomes fully yours. That's just another route, and I was trying to anticipate some of the issues that we'd still be talking about tonight, and that's why I wanted to bring that up again. And I really wish I could offer you more detail. When you use the door example of 750 and 450, we're very cross-conscious on the way we're putting this together, and, you know, that might be an example that's glaringly out of line, but I'm not very familiar with those two numbers that you just put out there, but they seem like they're in the ballpark.
Even just the windows, what you had on your bid sheet was 44,000 and our two bids were 18,000 and 15,000.
Vinyl windows, no, it was 10,000.
Yeah, but you had the replacement windows down farther at 34.
Because this is all the windows.
Oh, okay.
You do all of them.
Yeah.
And actually, these two figures then include the new ones.
Yeah, and there's a handful of new ones. Obviously, there's four new windows that are in multipurpose, so.
Their bid did, though.
I get that.
Yes.
And hopefully you've seen, we're willing to work with you on these different issues. And I just don't have a lot more information I can offer to you other than what I have in this delivery method. You know, if we were looking at it a different way, and there's a number of ways. I'm pointing out, I'll point out two extremes. What we're doing is design, bid, build, faster, cheaper. There's traditional, design it, bid it, and then build it. And then in-between is this method I'm talking about is construction management.
Yeah, we've spent almost a year funneling this project down as much as we possibly could.
Yes. And I think the resulting plan is a good solution at a minimal amount of cost. Could it be cheaper? Yeah, maybe in a different delivery, it could be, or parsing it out like you have with the site and the exterior.
Anyone else have any questions at this time?
Personally, I can't see going ahead at this point. I think we need to reevaluate and go a different direction. I just, the feeling from our constituents and the public, they're not going to be at all happy with this number.
No, and I think you can do, we can...
I think we have to do better.
Yes.
And I hate leaving, I'd like to have the sign done and off of the next commission's table. I don't want to leave it for them, but I also don't want to leave them with a bill at $606,000 and pitchforks and torches coming our way. And if you don't think it'll happen, they're not, they're not happy with these numbers either, so.
Well, where do we go from here?
Well, if someone has a motion to make, potential motion could be either to accept the GMP or to reject the GMP and elect to move forward in our own direction.
If I may, Mr. President or Chairman, there is the option, we can take the plans you have now, if you're satisfied with what they are, and do a general bid process or a construction management process. Either one of those, I think, either one of those will satisfy either, yeah, while that really is the price, based on maybe some doubt, or it will give you the detail that you're wanting to be able to comb through and challenge items, you know, one by one. That would be a reasonable thing, I think. You know, if we've gone down this road as far as we can and you're not willing to say, "Let's go to the next step," that would be a way, in my opinion, to go, if you're really wanting to get something accomplished.
So you've got kind of three options, then? So accept the GMP as-is, move forward with them as the general contractor, or separate our ways and move forward ourselves.
Well, I think one thing, too, is I know we've taken, this has been dragging out, but at this point, a lot of the items that we're going to need, we're going to have a tough time getting them. So we might as well take the time, do it right, and do it at the right price, you know?
Because there's a delay in all supplies right now.
Bingo.
I mean...
Electrical, everything.
I think I just waited...
Even siding.
Six weeks for my siding.
Yeah.
So I understand that. But like I said, I don't, didn't want to leave this to the next board, but I just can't see going ahead with this tonight.
No.
So what were the three? Accept it, reject it, or what else?
Go to...
You could do the general, general contractor.
General contracting or a hybrid construction management approach.
So, construction management, say that to me one more time. We then receive all the bids, we go through them ourselves, the city?
Well, they would be yours to be reviewed. I would be alongside you, going through them and doing the interviews with the subcontractors, making sure their scope is correct, and then they have the full job. That wouldn't be a responsibility totally on you. But the benefit to that is you have all the data that's available for a bid, which in this methodology of designability, you just don't have that. But this would be, it would be your contract, and again, you'd save on the bonds and insurance, you'd save on the contingency as well, and potentially on some tax items if you purchase them yourself.
Can we, I think that the way that the contractors, our local contractors are coming in, that, and we manage it, I think is the way to go. So I would make a motion to go that way.
I'll support it.
Okay, so exactly what?
This is to reject the GMP.
Right, but to go with, then contracted ourselves.
Like we did the exterior.
So we would either have DPW individually work on bidding all these out, or we could interview for a general contractor?
Yeah, and the committee can help you with that also.
Yep.
Because I know he's overloaded.
So that's your motion? Okay. And we've got a second. Any questions on that?
So, just want to say, so you're saying reject the GMP and move forward on our own? That's what you're saying, correct?
Which is not what the CM...
No, that was the third option.
That was the third option.
Correct.
Any other questions on it? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Murchin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merkman.
Yes.
Mayor Vandembach.
Yes.
Commissioner Carey.
Ms. May, I have a point of clarification for us. So in this process that you're going to take, our role is obviously changing, and I guess we need to define that, which I guess we could outline the areas of our assistance, and then we could kind of do like a checklist, some kind of thing.
Correct.
So should I just work with Elaine on that, or?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Sounds very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
You're very welcome.
Moving on to exterior quotes for 260 South Parker.
So Mike contacted a number of people regarding doing the exterior for the building and had some people out, took a look at the building. A lot of them were people that were already familiar with the project that was at hand. He did receive these two quotes, one from CR Smith and one from Blue Water Building. He's recommending the bid from CR Smith for 52,460.
Can I get a motion to accept the bid?
I'll make a motion.
We have to waive competitive bidding first.
Oh, that's right.
I'll make a motion that we waive competitive bidding on this project for the exterior.
Motion, support. Any questions on waiving competitive bidding? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hender.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Murchin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merkman.
Yes.
Mayor Vandembach.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid of 52,460 from CR Smith, the contractor for the exterior of the building.
Support. Motion, support. Any questions on it?
I just have a comment. I do want to say that I've worked very closely with CR Smith in a renovation project that he did on a home, and he did, they did fabulous work for us. So I think we're making a good move here.
He is a good contractor.
Yes, he is.
Well, the price, you know...
And he manages projects, too.
He does, he manages the project.
Yes, he does manage projects.
One other comment about this, about the color, that is something that if we have a subcommittee, we'll want to pick a color, and we may need to come back for additional money to pay for a different color.
Let me ask this, though, before we finish this motion. What about the, where we may have the additional 45 per sheet, how do you want to deal with that?
That would be something that we could bring back unless you want to put, like, say, a contingency of 10% in here.
Well, I know he's going to have some, so I mean, there's no doubt. But I mean, that's, that's a small addition per sheet that he's going to add, so...
You could add a contingency of 10% and that could cover color and the boards that may need to be replaced?
Want to go...
And then through the subcommittee, we'll work on a color?
Do you want to do something like not to exceed 53? Would that cover?
I don't know that that's going to be enough, especially for the color.
With the color.
Maybe 55?
All right, well, that's, I just want to try to get us a not to exceed.
Yes. It won't take so long to get a not to exceed price.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll correct my motion that we approve this with a not to exceed $55,000.
Is this support?
All right, just wanted to make sure...
And has anybody touched base with them on a timing?
I believe Mike said that materials would be six to eight weeks.
Okay.
And that's going to be the norm.
Mm-hmm.
For the moment, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Murchin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merkman.
Yes.
Mayor Vandembach.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hender.
Yes.
Hey, let's have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, Gary.